I will call this meeting of the Board of Select to order at 7 o'clock PM on Monday, October 16th, 2023. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, introductions, starting with Roland.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Reynolds.
Andrew Alward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Matthew Maile.
Okay. And announcements, recognition of Millville Services 20-year anniversary operating in Millville.
So they'll be able to come to your meeting on the 6th where you could present this, but it's been prepared dated November 6th.
Okay.
But since you're all here for signatures, maybe you want to do that?
They get it signed tonight?
Yeah.
Right, so should we make a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Roland? I say, sorry. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want anyone to feel pressure that they have to say aye. Okay. And we will start with old business for a MES water status update, and I see Dr. Gullik is here to present some slides.
You wanted them advanced, I assumed you loaded them?
I did not load them, no, no, no. No, did you? You didn't make any changes then that I suggested? Okay, I can send them to Tim?
I was never sent any if you want to.
I'll send them to him.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's a good guess.
I think my orange one is better.
Just missing Matt.
That was last year on August 15th, as I recall.
Yes.
It's been a busy two and a half months since we started with this operation. I'm waiting on the data, but I'll start telling you, jump ahead a little bit.
You can take a seat if you want, so you can grab a microphone.
Yeah.
So I sent it to you, Tim. That's good. Leave me on the mic?
That's where the folks at home can hear you.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Welcome. So jumping ahead just to save you a minute, there's been a fair amount of, well, we've had a lot of successes, and we'll show you the one limitation that came up, the trihalomethanes. This system is greatly oversized. It's running at the six gallons per minute. We have to keep the well pump rate, we crank it down with valves so it doesn't put in too much water. It'll, according to the last engineer, it'll de-water the well. So I'll just accept that for now. So we're running at six gallons a minute, which is a very low range of what those green, the green sand can do. These units can do 70 gallons a minute. I don't know exactly how much of the green sand, but at least six times what we're doing, or potentially up to six times. We only need, given, even when the students are there, this only needs to run part-time, given the sizing. When the students aren't there, it's just absurd. It's less than an hour a day. These are not steady-state systems, meaning that the concentration of chlorine does not stay steady coming out unless they run continuously for a while. And since they go off and on, there's always a ramp-up period and a ramp-down period, and it takes a lot of work to try to get the chlorine balanced. Had it balanced the other day, and apparently it liked that chlorine, and the next thing you know, it goes way up the next day. And that's okay right now, nobody's drinking it anyways, and it gives me a chance to experiment some. So I took advantage of that and sent samples to the lab today for halocetic and trihalomethanes while I've got a supercharged green sand filter with chlorine. And then I got it to come down some more where I want it, took more samples and so on. And I will be testing that at different, thank you, different levels over time of different chlorine coming out of the green sand to try to directly correlate the trihalomethane and the halocetic acid formation. Done that before, but with numbers given to me by the other operator, that they didn't even know themselves exactly whether it was average or what. But you'll see the, what I can use now for the data. So we'll review that a tad bit when we get back. Let's take a look at some of the results. So the first thing is what causes color, and that's the manganese and the iron. Ever since that green sand, you may recall, it's when the green sand filter doesn't have enough chlorine coming out for an extended period of time, a month or two, and it's really low, then it breaks through and stops working. That's what happened last fall. It's what happened in January big time, when they stopped feeding chlorine on top. It's bad enough to not have it coming off the bottom. Forget it, if you don't have any coming off the top, it'll desorb out, and you'll get, a point like that that's well above the influent. So this is the influent, pretty steady with the manganese. Ever since they replaced it after the very first sample, it's always been really good. Non-detecting almost all of those for the manganese, that's the tougher one. The iron, which I don't show the raw value because it's too high, it's about 15 or so, these are also working very well since the February disaster. And they're all below the secondary maximum contaminant level. They're not non-detect, other than one, that's still excellent, excellent removal for that kind of an iron level, according to the top expert in the country told me that last week. He was really impressed. So that's where we are. There are 11 of the 12 samples for manganese that have been non-detect, including all since June, including the two that I've been responsible for in August and September, as well as the previous, they worked for the previous operator after the green sand was replaced. So that was great, and all the irons are doing good. So yay for that one. Halocetic acids is another yay. That was the big obstacle, the thing you've had all the public notices about, 10 different quarters, 11 counting this one, 12 counting next, 13 counting one after, because they're coming, because of the annual averaging that you have to do. So we're going to be failing till the year passes around. Now, in the past, some of these numbers were rather variable, where from 23, the 249 was right after they replaced the green sand, soaked it with chlorine, they didn't flush out the chlorine enough and took the samples, that's why it was so high. Okay? Might be something like I saw today, we'll see. But our last two, and July's was low, but the last two have been, the last two months have been quite good. We only sample this one every quarter, this one monthly. This is, was the nurse's office, which was superintendent's office now, so I moved it across the hall, and that one is, is an upstairs room. So since these usually end up the same, you can see how close those values are, that one not too close, but fairly. So we only do that once a quarter, save a couple dollars. But these have been pretty good. The annual average is 60, that's the limit. So, and I put that on here because that's not exactly my goal. While it's a magic number for the regulators, I don't think there's anyone who would accept that if you have 61 parts per billion, people will get sick, and if you have 60, they won't. Because life just doesn't work that way. But it's still the regulatory goal. So the, then, while the halocetic acids all look good, I had one here in September of a non-compliance sample of very high. At the same time, the same day, in the school, it was only 18. I haven't figured that one out, other than maybe there's a little pocket of chlorine coming out that caused that.
What's a non-compliance sample? What does that mean?
A non-compliance sample would be one that we take-
We don't report on?
The state requires every single piece of data to be reported, which is very difficult, and I don't know what they do with it all, but that's another question. But there are a set sampling schedule that's required by the DEP, and those two, the storage tank effluent and the green sand effluent, for these compounds are not part of that. So I'm using those for research. So for example, today I sampled the green sand effluent, one of them twice, another one once, and sampled the storage tank, but I didn't sample the finished, or the ones in the room yet, we'll get to that later this month. Oops. So we were trying to finish this in time. So those, those are, they're very good, the 18 was very good. That one's an odd one, doesn't hit us regulatory, but it certainly concerns me. But these have, I mean, what you'll see here is there is no real increase from the green sand effluent through the storage tank. Storage tank in these rooms are usually roughly the same, but there's no increase there, which is different for the trihalomethanes. Now, I warned you back in August that these, we had not had a violation for these, but we were going to, based on previous data. And that, we are getting that, a violation for both trihalomethane and halocetic acids this quarter, DEP's working on preparing that for us to have the school distribute. In this case, however, we did not have as great numbers. It was a little better than, certainly better than that one in July, but on average, these were not much better. That surprised me. I did not expect that, since the chlorines were better controlled, or so I think they're better controlled. But they were controlled manually. We had no remote data. The previous operator took the data box that stored all the data, took that with them, and didn't give it its data, and the data transmission was the same equipment. So that, that was a problem. So for all of these samplings, what we had is what we physically saw while in the room. Plus, we have to run hoses and try to consume water, so we're still working on it. I set up two new hoses outside today, trying to create demand to keep these reactors going. So the trihalomethanes a little better in July, but did not improve much like the halocetic acids did. What is key here to notice is this particular sample, and then same from this one to the room in the school, there's a big increase from the green sand effluent to the storage tank. That means, and, but not for the halocetic acids, at least on the data we've seen. That opens up a different treatment avenue within the tank itself, aerating the tank. The trihalomethanes will blow off into the air, halocetic acids will not. And it's possible to retrofit the tank and have those removed that way.
Was the MCL on that, Rich?
80, sorry. I didn't get it on the slides. Had no, Peter was here since 9:40 this morning, never stopped a minute to redo your slides. But it's 80, and again, I'll come back to you with those, but I don't want to focus on them now. I deliberately left it off the slides, actually.
You mentioned it here.
Yeah. So what's the status? Iron and manganese are good, halocetic acid's good, trihalomethane's too high. We're still learning how the system responds, especially in this non-steady state situation. There was a lot of extra work, given no overlap with the previous operator. The folks at the, at the school, Matt and Scott Hebert, who's here, are quite helpful. We're tracking down where the backwash water goes today, and I did find out, I did find out, by the way, it is the two in the field. It was definitely going in the far one, and you see trickling in the first one. So now I know where the water goes. It was while I was backwashing, I'm out there pulling up manhole covers. So I increased the amount of rinse there, trying to just give it a means to consume water without us turning on hoses. Can't do that in winter, you know, because we're putting it out on pavement. So we'll have to, I'll have another means for that. We did recently acquire remote access to the online data, not long ago, still getting used to that, that's great to have. In, let me see, mid-September it was, I was in Cincinnati and attended EPA's Drinking Water Research, Drinking Water Workshop. Small System Challenges and Solutions from the EPA Office of Research and Development, the Office of Water, and the Association of State Drinking Water Administrators. I'll come back to that one in a minute, because I've got another slide with it. But there's possible good stuff. So I mentioned these particular, some of these particular challenges, they're not excuses, just challenges. And the high chlorine demand, the predicted dose is about 16, we're adding about 27. So I'm, we're trying to change chlorine residuals coming out of these filters at .2, .3 at a time, maybe .5, while we're adding 27. So it's a tough thing. I'm hoping to get computer control remotely for the chlorine pump, might need a new pump and some electronics, so I can control it while I'm away. Friday, I'm seeing it go up, didn't have the chance to come back down. Had people been here, maybe I'd squeezed it in, but nobody's drinking the water, so again, I just let it be a little high for the weekend. Yes, sir.
Before you-
Jump in any time.
Just talk about some of the other things that are tested that we know don't have a problem or an issue, you know? You've got other chemicals that we don't see, we test for-
All kinds of things. The bacteria are all negative, all the bacteria tests, the PFAS is still over what the new reg might be, but it's still somewhat up. But everything else passes fine. It's, the only issues are iron and manganese when it's not working well, and then the chlorinated byproducts. So I'm conducting research, started principally today, and will be tracking all sorts of variables, adjusting some, and working mostly with the chlorine dosing. So what you can see here, this is what I can now see at home, or pull up on my phone here, and will pull up before I leave town, in case I want to run back and change what I did today. I was tweaking it as I'm running out the door. And you go up, oh, it's too high, you go low, it's too low. So this tells me the pump's on, and I can see exactly what, see, it took a while for the chlorine to go up. This is about a half a milligram per liter, what typically would have been our target. I'd rather have it lower, but I was fine with this one. We'd been low for a while, so I was trying to get it higher for a while also, make sure the iron and manganese come out. So it takes a while to get up, and then it hung around. When you see this drop, that's when it switches from one green sand filter to the next one. And so this one's backwashing, and then you can see that one also took a while for the chlorine to go up, and then it gets steady. So if you just look at the beginning, you don't know where we are. So you've got to look there. What I would do is average this and do other statistics on it and see what. And then, we now have the chlorine monitor working all the time. It used to only work when the pump's on, but I can tell when it's on or off. So there's no water flowing with these, but the concentration does turn around and drop off, as we're seeing. So it's reacting with things and so on. So different things we can do to improve this with the trihalomethanes. Again, I thought that we'll either get better control with the chlorine as we work, and we have the remote data now, it's a great tool. If we have computer control of it, that would be tremendous, but even so, if I can do it remotely, or have somebody local run in and change it from 23% to 20%, or whatever we're needing, would be great. So that's one option, is working with the chlorine residuals. Another, when you see, when we see it come out of the green sand filter and then go up, or if we see the levels coming out of the green sand filter within the compliance levels, we can add granular activated carbon after those tanks, have it go through there, and that will remove all the chlorine, chlorine will react with the activated carbon. Would also remove some of that total organic carbon, it creates them, but that wouldn't matter with the chlorine gone, but it would remove some of the halocetic acids and trihalomethanes. It would also probably remove some of the PFAS compounds, which is the next challenge coming up. So that's a fairly potential option. We need to see how the data, where the data lead us for that. Another option is aeration for the trihalomethanes in the storage tank. Another option would be to resize the system and put in some much smaller tanks, either for when people aren't there, students, you know, the current staffing, or for other times when the students are there. They could still be smaller and keep them running more continuously, which maintains them in better operational condition. Then there's the permanganate option, that was the one proposed by the previous operator. I had accepted that based on the idea that they weren't controlling the chlorine, even with reminders, but it's not the preferred option necessarily, because it can and will give you pink water. I've had two of those incidents when I worked in Charlottesville, Virginia. Operator would make a mistake, something would break, pink water's going downtown to the university, I got heck for it, you won't want that. So that's not our preferred option if we don't have to. If we do that, there will be no disinfection byproducts because there's no chlorine. But you've got that potential. I believe if we get colored water to the school, we're toast again. And whatever confidence we've built will be shot, even if it's fairly harmless and the state doesn't care about the pink water, people do. And that's what'll matter there. I've been communicating and actually, and participated in the meeting this past week with American Water Works Association's Manganese Subcommittee. So it's the top experts on manganese, including the authors of the Water Research Foundation Manual for Treating Manganese. So they're giving me feedback, I've got more conversations coming up, a bunch of questions that are posted to the committee, we're going to go over at one of their next meetings. So I'm working with the top experts in the country on the manganese side and green sand. In addition, there was an opportunity that came up when I was at that conference in Cincinnati. This conference was put on by the Office of Research and Development, they're some of the best scientists in the country, certainly have the best for lead copper, disinfecture byproducts and so on. They have a project, you can see here, technical assistance project for treating emerging contaminants. Well, the key emerging contaminant for them are those PFAS compounds, which are upcoming thing. So they were looking for volunteer small systems. I volunteered Millville immediately. Actually, they asked, once I was describing it, I was described, I met one of the leaders of this, Nick Dugan, one of the co-authors, the lead author there, and described some of the water quality, he jumped and asked, would we be interested? Absolutely. So what they do is they're going to be doing research studies with different small systems around the country, and they've contacted all the state governments for that. They did not hear anything from Massachusetts, which both guys pointed out to me very quickly, that you're coming with a Massachusetts case, but DEP didn't, you know, suggest you guys, I wonder why? So they were both curious about that. But anyways, we, I'm hoping that we'll end up in this program, that would be tremendous for leading you through the PFAS treatment option, there's still the Connect to Experts option, but these guys are great, and it's a, would save you a lot of money, everything's free. We just have to take the time to send, collect and send samples, and then work with them. I worked with the second author there, I worked with him on some stuff over 20 years ago, so I'm pretty, somewhat familiar with them from those days. So it's a tremendous opportunity for us, and we need DEP support for this. The EPA will not do it without DEP support. I did inform the researchers about some of the extra drama that goes on in the background here. Either my situations with DEP, Millville situations with DEP, the students being moved out. In fact, I believe the biggest resistance to potentially doing this was the fact that the students had moved out. They seemed to, Mr. Dugan seemed to lose some interest with that aspect, I assured him they would get back. But we're hoping, DEP has to support this, or they won't do it. That concerns me, as to what DEP will support and will not here. So I will hold off any other, I don't want to say anything that would potentially impact that in a negative way, and I'll leave it at that. We need their support.
Yes, sir.
Period. I mentioned we've got violations in Quarter 3, and an upcoming public notice for halocetic acids and trihalomethanes. Since the students are not in the school, we don't need to send the notice to all of them, it'll be sent to the staff, all the staff members that are there, they're the ones consuming the water. As you know, I've had issues with both DEPs and the school district's narratives about the water quality. I will simply draw your attention to the quote at the bottom, and leave it at that for now. And I had told DEP back in September that a corrective action plan would be completed, a revised one, after I received the August and September data. But once I saw that data with a high trihalomethanes, that changed my opinion, and now I'm not ready to give a commitment as to what the path forward will be. I think we should wait for me to do a little more research this fall. That was part of the students being out, was to give some opportunity to get it fixed. So I'm going to take advantage of that. Have chlorine high, medium, low, see what happens. We do not have our new engineer contracted yet, I told you who it was in August, but he has not signed a contract yet. Everyone is so, so busy. There are no operators available, there's barely any engineers available, he's still committed, and Peter's been in touch lately, but hasn't signed a contract yet. So we can't say where we're going until the engineer has input, because they're the ones who got to do it. So it doesn't make sense to like tell DEP what we're going to do at this point. Plus, we want to know whether EPA is going to do this research, and if they are, well, heavens, we want to get their input. These are some of the best people in the world. And do we want to fix this now and use something that's not going to help us with PFAS? If we have to turn around and do that, eh, we may want to take a couple more minutes or weeks or whatever, and make sure we can include the PFAS research in the midst of this. And that's it. Questions?
So I have a question. So with Mass DEP, are there levels of closure that you could possibly notify the state of a temporary closure because there's no students in the building, not a permanent one, without getting penalized for not providing July's readings or any future readings, until you can get-
Yeah, I didn't mention that.
Yeah, until you can get these readings normalized? Like, is there a level of a temporary closure that you can file with them?
You can, you could declare this to no longer be a public water system. It has less than 15 connections, which is one, the building, and 25 people using it. I believe that's under 25 right now. Do you happen to know how many people working in the building? Okay. I see 15 cars maybe toning.
I'm just thinking that that might be an option to try to take some pressure off you while you fix the readings while not having a report to the state.
That doesn't bother me.
Well-
To report to the state. What would be tough would be re-signing up again as a public water system. Because now you got to, I probably, I can't, I'm not an expert at this, so we'd have to check with DEP, and I wouldn't necessarily want to. But you would no longer be a public water system now if you start being one, now you got to apply again. I don't know that they have a, you can take a temporary timeout, I doubt that. And it doesn't faze me one way or the other if we're reporting to the state, where I report to the world, basically. They do have, you know, the compliance notices, but I don't think our, we're going to hurt the reputation of the water at this point, there's-
Well, I'm not worried about that. What I'm thinking about is trying, you got to keep having failure notices, you're not going to get the average down anytime soon. I'm wondering if you can freeze that data until you can get a passing score, until you're comfortable.
I don't believe so. And I do expect to, again, I don't want to make any promises, I felt a little bit over-promised the last time, a little bit, kind of like Mission accomplished barrier, I don't have an aircraft carrier, but the trihalomethanes did catch me by surprise, I admit that. But they can get under control, once we see the data. I'll know more in the next few weeks as I'm working with live, I mean, we actually have all the data. Again, we were blind the last two months, the first two months, pretty much, we get some grabs here and there. We're catching up and making sure the instruments are working right, you know, there's been so much effort. But yeah, there's one thing I didn't mention here, in terms of DEP, I was told that since, remember in July, the operator left before the month was over, on the 28th was their last day? They did not complete the monthly operating reports. I wanted them to, wanted the state, and I believe Ms. Gill asked the state, I think you asked the drinking water chief, can you guys hold them and make them work longer? And they said no, apparently they didn't know or did not implement their 10-day policy. And that really, really hurt us, that DEP did not do that. And the engineer-operator also had a 30-day clause in his contract. I got a one-day clause, but a 10-day is an operator. And that really stuck us a lot, in terms of where are things, where does this water go onto the ground, all these different things you learn in 20 years of working with a system, that they just took that knowledge with them. But one of the samples has to be that you collect a, one sample in the school nurse's office for chlorine when you take the bacteria. Well, I didn't have the results, because they're, they had them. So I submitted the form and signed it with no number. And they're giving us a lot, they gave me grief, said, well, if you didn't report that, you're going to get a violation. It's a tier three, it goes out in your annual report. But they might give us a violation for not giving them one chlorine value that was zero. I know it's zero, 0.01, because it's almost always low. This to me is a little over the top. I pointed out to them, but we would have had this had you implemented your 10-day policy. So we'll see if they got ticked at that, or whether, what they'd do with it. But I just, I wanted to point that out to you as to how strict they can be and how non-supportive they can be, given they did that and stuck us with this, and, you know, I did what I could to get that one number that's really valueless. I mean, it's a zero. I tried to find it, I asked them for data, you got, I can't get it from the lab because it's confidential, so anyways, long story, but we'll see if they actually come out with that. And there may be a couple others for monitoring things as I'm getting straight the monitoring plan. I couldn't get the revised total coal form rule sampling plan from them, or the water quality parameter sampling plan yet. I actually did have something, to contradict something else they have, so I'm working on getting that straightened out this week.
But even listening to Richard over here, right, his, the temporary pause, let's say you could get a temporary pause, that isn't really going to change the scope of effort that you have to get a handle on-
Doesn't change anything.
On, on, on the system, correct?
I think it changes anything to us. Well, and I'd rather keep going to them and keep it public. I think there's an advantage to that, sir.
Where I'm going with this is I think if we could put a pause on that data until we could get our hands around it, we could reduce the violations coming in, and does the state have a right to revoke a water operator's license?
Yes.
And what grounds?
There, there is a code of conduct that's required. There's also a policy for operators, which I read, as I became an operator for you, and that's where I found the 10-day policy, it's in, very, right on front page, front page And that's where I found the 10-day policy. It's in very, right on front pa- front page of it.
So that's where I was going with that is if we file for temporary closure considering the, the building's not occupied by students, but by staff for minimum use, can, you know, we, we put this reporting on hiatus until we get our hands around it? Without risking a revocation of the public water operator license?
I believe you do. We could ask, I would recommend not and just proceed forward as we're proceeding. I don't see how it helps us. The school hates the water, that, you know, the, the leadership.
I'm not thinking politically. I'm thinking legally.
But you're really, if, if you think about the timeframes we're striving for, for the school decision-making, right? Which is January, February, where there's confident, they gain confidence that there's a handle on the thing. That's independent of the quarterly, the running average to, you know, that has to be reported. So we're, we're in for three quarters more of violation notices.
You're going to go all the way through.
Even though the water's pristine is all get out in terms of DBPs, right?
It is not pristine is all get out. Sorry, sir.
No, I know.
Methanes are high.
No, no, I said, no, no, I'm not, even if you got those down and so all things are, all individual tests are below the MCLs, right? You're, you're still stuck with that quarterly violation.
They'll come out anyways. Even if you say we're not a system, I bet you they still put them out.
Yeah, no, I, I don't.
Just guessing.
Well, I know you're guessing, but where I'm going with that, Peter, is, is I just, I'm not comfortable running the risk of having this license revoked or causing further legal complications, especially where the corrective action plan hasn't been published either.
Well, they, they have a corrective action plan that's been submitted. They've been put on notice that they're, I think you described it in one of your bullet points here, what you're doing.
The revised would be completed in September, after, after August, September data. We've decided to put that on hold because we want more data.
That's what, that's what I'm rec, that's what I'm telling you I want to do.
So Peter, can we just ask legal?
I'm not sure what I would be asking them exactly.
Question either.
Is it possible to do a temporary closure until we fix the system?
To not be a public water system.
So that we wouldn't have to report and we wouldn't keep, continue getting violation notices?
I, I can ask. I mean, I.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think it would hurt. I think we.
I can ask legal. I think so, but.
I think it would extend the time to where we'd have to send out violation notices. So it's like as we get this data and the halo acidic acids are coming down, that's bringing the average down. So at least that notice might be, be under control sooner.
But if you put it on pause, that would give him an opportunity to continue running the system, get his hands around it.
Yeah, they did. I have that opportunity regardless.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that the, again, you can check with legal.
Do you think they're going to revoke if we keep this?
Well, my question was, is do they, can the state revoke the public water operator license?
You mean us being a public water supply? Can they say this is no longer a public water supply?
And they revoke it, right?
When you use the word water operator, I was like, they're not going to do anything to Dr. Gullik.
No, 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 I mean, public water supply.
Water supply.
No, sir. They will find, they might find you for not acting, but we're acting and we're acting hard. Not only that, we've got potentially the two top teams for PFAS and manganese in the country. In fact, the world on our side, which is incredible for such a small town system.
Haven't given them a corrective action plan yet. We're still getting violation notices.
We're going to get the, the corrective action plan, the violation notices come because of the actual data.
I know.
They're going to keep coming, even if you say we're not a public water system. I can't imagine that they wouldn't send them to the school.
I, I don't, I don't know about that. I, I don't know.
But you'd have to re- become again a public water system.
I guess you don't know that. I don't know that.
Right, we don't know that. That's why I'm saying.
We can ask.
But yeah, to me it makes no difference.
I agree.
Technically or otherwise. I appreciate the brainstorming thought though. And we, we have thought of that.
I'm just thinking.
We've talked about that.
From the point of view of the state, they're going to continue issuing, you know, these violation notices. And they don't have a corrective action plan.
They, they do have one. They've had three. That's why I didn't want to submit another. I believe Ms. Gill submitted effectively one earlier, a few weeks ago on an email that said what we're going to do. Permanganate and so.
Communication with Mary Jude that we might do something simultaneous after our call.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I recommend not doing that.
Okay.
Have we submitted that as a, as an action plan?
No, just as an email.
Just an email.
They never accepted the corrective action plan. They never responded to any of the three of them.
Correct.
There's been not a word. So when I told them, I'm going to, give me a little time to look at the data. That makes sense. I can send in a corrective action plan saying, we don't know how we're going to correct it because we're learning new things. And we want to study it and we want to use these experts' input. And we really need your support for the EPA project. That's where the town I think should push DEP. If there's anything to go to DEP, it's please support this project. I asked you guys, both of you before, you know, in talking with the state.
Yep, we can do that.
And when we spoke to her, Jen, she, she already knew about it. She had been contacted, it sounded like, from these folks about it. But it wasn't that we were asking for support. It was just we were excited at the possibilities.
Since EPA did contact Mass DEP, what that means to me, from what they told me, they've gotten past any obstacles that I personally presented or, or the data presented or the, I mean, the challenges they love. Or that, uh, or the school had presented or all the, all the drama. They've gone to DEP and said, can we do this?
They have?
They, they, that's according to Peter. He heard from Mary Jude Pigsley, the regional director, that yes, EPA contacted them.
Okay.
So I haven't heard anything yet and EPA can take a long time and a lot of paperwork even in the research group. But that's what we, if we miss, if they don't support that. Uh, we were told, first time Mary Jude Pigsley joined one of our meetings, that Millville was the top priority for central region of Mass DEP. You've probably heard it a few times. Especially in regard to PFAS. So we'll find out the sincerity of that when we see whether they let EPA do this research with us. Because why would you not? Right? Yeah. I mean, the EPA researchers are ready to do this and we have some very interesting water to them. Oh, you can see the, the scientist geek's eyes. What kind of, wow, all that iron and manganese? And the PFAS isn't that high, but okay. So, so it's a lower level to have to remove some. Oh, and you got disinfection byproducts too. Yeah. So they got all excited, Mr. Dugan, about that. So that's a tremendous possible opportunity. Um, there's other things I, I, I could tell you that I learned at the conference, but I'll hold that off till another update. I don't, I want to make sure we get this EPA research thing. That's our priority. Okay?
While Rich is here, just to get his insight, uh, our thoughts on, uh, bulk water. You know, in other words, we've heard from Mary Jude who says, that's not a solution, right?
She had told us that previously also.
Yep.
So we did know that.
Just that there's interest.
Bulk water is a great solution in my view. I recommended it long ago to Peter. I think this is crazy insane to have a professional of my level and salary coming down, driving here to work this system for a few hours to produce 200 gallons a day for the school right now. This is nuts and expensive. We're going to try to get it as less expensive as possible. But the bulk water, you still, if it's temporary, you still need to add the corrosion control chemicals to it to keep whatever coatings there. But if you do it permanently, so to speak, you don't, you wouldn't want to do that because those chemicals would not be needed because that's for the water coming from the well. That's very corrosive. So you'd back off on that. So you would probably still need an, an operator, but it wouldn't need to be me. You wouldn't need to research. You just bring the tank. So I recommend, oh, a year ago or something, um, even when the school was in session, actually. Um, because you could bring in two trucks a week. If you bought a truck, had a driver or, you know, contract with somebody, you could do that. I thought less expensive. I didn't price it out, but the water cost is almost nothing compared to the trans, the hauling of it. It's all in the transportation. Now that would be not the most convenient way. You'd have to hook up. You got to do it in the winter. You know, there's probably a few things to think through that, that might be obstacles.
Scott might have input on it.
But to me, it's physically an option. Regulatory, it is not an option in the long term. The state just does not allow that. They don't allow point of use devices, which to me would have been another great solution. Um, the school could have years ago put on, or the town, on the, the water fountains, put an activated carbon filter, put one in in the kitchen. Um, you know, a little system to treat the water locally. And you fix the water, but the state is going to still go by there. So ideas to keep working with the chemistry, use the new data tool. That is so great, having the remote data. I can see it. I can get scared at it from home. Just can't control it from there yet.
So I, I see, you know, where Mary Jude talks about this, um, you know, we're MG, MGL here doesn't, you know, approve it, but, um, as a permanent solution, she says no.
Correct.
Given the long history of violations here, we believe approving the bottled water is more protective than using the public water. As far as compliance, disinfection by price. So I mean, I don't see her saying no here, not on a temporary basis.
How, right, temporary. We cannot allow as a permanent solution.
We're not doing this for 10 years. We're doing it until we have a water hookup.
So that's what we talked about with her specifically. So if any, you have her email here. If any of you want to email her and dig into this, I, like, please do. And just CC Peter.
You can't do it temporarily without respect. While I'm trying to.
No, I know. It seems, according to this, I, I take it as we can.
No, you can, you cannot legally, maybe yes, absolutely. We did last summer.
But it will mess with his test.
It'll mess with my work.
Yeah.
Right.
Because now you're putting water in the tank and I need to see what happens with it coming out of the tank. So I definitely would not want that.
You weren't privy to the last conversations where I, I suggested you're shutting it off, just shutting it down.
Oh, I can understand that too. Oh, I'm, I'm, I could get radical with you.
Well, we would just bring in tankers of water until we have the water line in.
If you're going to end up with a water line in.
Right.
You know, you have enough money, didn't know what it's going to cost to drill through the rock.
And that's what Peter is working on.
And that also, I know the state pushes for that and that's one of the things that concerns me, that they might not support the EPA research con, possibility so much because they want to push you the other direction. So it's, well, hopefully, I'm just hopeful that they're very supportive of it. I don't know otherwise.
My concern is just, is, is the money.
Understandable.
What are we spending so far to date, Peter?
So we're going to be up, um, probably close to 30,000 by now of a $48,000 budget. So that's, you know, a town meeting, you have a warrant article and we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into the warrant in terms of what's the right number to put for extra. I asked Rich to think about that. I don't think he's had a chance to really spend much time.
I've thought, but not enough to report to you too much, but I can give you a couple of comments. That budget's way too low. The actual monitoring costs alone are about 30,000. They were 36 before, it'd be about 26. I added another 4,000 for some.
So to finish up this year, where do you think you'd be?
I don't have an exact number yet.
Ballpark, ballpark.
I don't want to ballpark in public until I've gone through the numbers better because somebody will hold me to it.
No, because he has also, we haven't gotten to a steady state. He's still in discovery, uh, assessment versus just straight operation.
We're backing off visits, trying to get down to two a week from three and then down to one a week.
Yeah, but when, when you, you ask for a recommendation, what, we have to pick a number for town meet, special town meeting. That number's somewhere in the magnitude of say 42 grand. Makes it a 90 grand budget. So it gives, you know, we'll get through probably the end of the year with what we have budgeted. That, that's my guess. And allows for, you know, maybe, maybe not quite to the end of the year, but you know, another six grand, seven grand a month.
No, I'm thinking it's higher than that, but I'll talk.
But we haven't, that's right. I don't have his input yet.
We haven't had a chance to go back.
The final number, you know, you're going to, we're going to, we're, we're talking about it now, sort of ahead of talking about the warrant. But, um, what the final number is that's presented at town meeting and the motion's made, still will be, I'm sure, tweaked.
So we're probably closer to 100.
Or over.
Or over 100 grand for the year?
Yes. Well, you've got 30,000 just in monitoring costs, just the lab expenses.
Really tripling down on this well and probably 60 to 80 and we could truck in water. So, um, one final question. The, the, Dr. Gullik had mentioned a smaller system with smaller tanks. Dr. Gullik, we know roughly what that would cost if we did go that route?
We could go that route. I don't think it would be too, too expensive, a few thousands. I mean, I don't know about all the electronics. I haven't looked greatly into that or figured out what size to look at.
You're talking about replacing the two green sand filters, which just had their media changed in.
I would, I would install others in addition and keep those physically there probably.
Yeah. Although there's not a lot of floor space for stuff.
Right.
If you go to the activated carbon filter floor space needs as well.
I think it's an option. It is not one that I've done any engineering calculations on yet, but I think it's an option as I've looked at different sizes of units. But I think that's an option that may be less expensive. It doesn't give you pink water.
Barbie pink, right?
Yeah, I mean, for 15 people, you don't need much more in a household system. If that's all we're doing, 20 people.
But the, isn't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the real goal is to get to where the school district is comfortable with the water. And whether it's bulk water or it's the system water and to get to, and assuming it's not bulk water, because there's hurdles to overcome with DEP based on conversations, maybe not as precisely worded in the email, but conversations with DEP, right? We've been trying to get our hands around the system. And the challenges are that it's hardly any usage, as you've described.
We're getting around.
Closing in on the system, you, we got a surprise with the whole trihalomethane challenge, for which there are reasonable solutions as well, right?
And reasonably costing.
But it's all about the confidence of school leadership to allow the students back into the school and the water that the students have available to wash their hands because they're not, and maybe cook with it. But whether they drink with it, that's, you know, decades worth of effort to change that.
Keep in mind that the school leadership's viewpoint here, their narrative does not fit the reality that I understand of water.
Yeah.
That's the reality right here. Customers, they continue to use and consume the water as normal. Nobody else moves everybody out of the school.
The reality of it is Dr. Gullik is, it was a political move and, um, they kind of won that battle because the kids aren't in the school.
I get that.
So I'm, I'm kind of done with that narrative.
So, so whether you can convince them personally of that it's safe, I question it, but we can do our best to meet the limits.
The only thing that is going to, the only thing that's going to convince them now is hard data. I think a track record, because right now they, we're not credible.
Neither.
This isn't credible data to.
Neither.
Yeah, I'm not.
We're over that, right?
We're, we're past that. We're past that.
But the narrative does need to change. I think you need to move the goalposts when you've, and I won't say anything further on that at this meeting. Save that for another time. Let's see what happens with EPA research.
Is, you know, brown, brown water or pink water, either way, uh, it's not clear. They just, the parents want clean water. Just give them clean water. So I get your point.
Well, the, the color's gone.
Yeah.
Still got some trihalomethanes.
So I have a couple of quick questions about the email we received.
Which email from who?
So this is from Mary Jude.
Mary Jude Pickley.
I think I shared that with.
This is more just general questions. I don't know if anybody would have answers. Um, but for one thing, she references a regulation that says that bottled water shall not be used.
That's what she meant, bulk water, bottled water.
Wasn't there an order by the governor to, that said that we couldn't use a governor? So.
Single serve bottles. So that's, so we're, we're no longer providing those to the school.
Well, my question is, how is that regulation even in any semblance useful anymore?
Correct.
It's been outdated by the governor. So.
This bottle, sir, this bottled water is bulk or carboys? She's not necessarily referring to single plastic bottles like that.
So where she's talking about like the five, like we're using five gallons, right?
Yeah, five gallon carboys, that counts.
Because the question I asked was bulk water. Can you give us specifics as to why this is not passed forward? And this was our first, blah, 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 blah. So I think when she said bottles, she meant bulk.
Yeah, it's an oversight.
Yeah.
Yeah, bottles not.
But that's what she's, she's quoting the, the regulation. That's the issue.
You're right. No, no, I, I, it has no, it has no merit anymore now that.
Well, not only that, but it doesn't refer to bulk water. Also, there's no regu, there's no reference as to what she's referring to.
Right.
Which I find disturbing because if you reference a law or regulation, I want to know what it is so I know what the terms are defined as.
Correct.
Which is, I mean.
You're talking about.
No, but it's just unprofessional. I mean, any college student would knows that you reference stuff if you're quoting it. Otherwise you're going to get caught on plagiarism. You're going to be kicked out of your college. So the heck. The other thing is, is that the bottled water does not refer to bulk water, I'm assuming.
I, I think she's using the term.
Interchangeably.
Interchangeably, which is terrific. Um, the other thing is, is that it's referring, she's mainly referring to temporary, not permanently. She doesn't address that at all.
Right.
Which.
There's no definition of what temporary versus permanent.
Right, which is kind of a dog whistle. The way I take it is she's basically stating like, I'm going to look the other way, but do what you gotta do.
Well, no, the other thing is, is that there's no definition as to what temporary and long-term are.
Right.
How is that possible?
It's their judgment. The law gives them lots.
Scratch.
Which, which makes it terrific for running of water when it's health issues.
Extremely difficult at times.
I'm, to be honest, I'm kind of thoroughly disgusted by this. It doesn't make any sense.
This email, sir?
Yeah, exactly.
The way that she's, the way it's written, the fact that there's no long or short-term definitions, what, I mean, what, what does that mean?
They're intentionally vague.
Yes, but this is health, people's health they're referring to. How do you not know what, you have definit- How do you not know what, you have definitive things.
Oh, she knows, she just hasn't stated it, that's the problem.
Well, I don't even know if they do know, it's just a judgment call as to whether what's politically advantageous for them at this point, that's what it looks like. Which is ridiculous.
Let's, let's encourage DEP to support EPA on this research. That's my, that's my focus right now, I have much to, I could talk to you about DEP, sir.
Yeah.
But for now, let's focus on that.
Well, yeah, but we've been asking that question for months, and we still haven't gotten a straight answer.
On which, the-
The bulk water.
We can't, it's not allowed by law, in the long term.
I just proved how that's not even logical anymore, and it's not even defined.
Right.
You can't say that's a law when there's no definition as to what bulk water or bottled water are. Not to mention the fact that bottled water isn't even in, allowed to begin with. It's like saying, oh, you can't use, fly a kite on Wednesdays, except at this, it doesn't make any sense. You can't, there's no definitions.
There's a fair amount of things that don't make sense.
Yeah.
The one thing that really makes sense is us getting Millville involved in the EPA's research project for PFAS, 'cause they'll help us with the iron and manganese and DBPs. I mean, I'm pretty good at this, but they're, they're also good.
Well, at this point, why don't we just shut off the whole system and just use bulk water? It would be cheaper, and we know, we have at least definitive, A, we have definitive costs. B, we don't, we'll have to hopefully less, deal with less regulations onto the fact that we won't have to deal with the whole system as it is standing right now. And, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why, what we're still doing.
We should be going to RFP, we should be doing it right now, or like, a month ago.
Once you go there, then you'll have different, we wouldn't be able to do our research if you do it soon, because we need the storage tank, right? I need the system. And what's, I think, I like the idea in ways. I think the, the money that's being spent is ridiculous for this, and I think DEP has a fair amount to do with that, and so does the school district. And without getting into the details of what's been said inaccurately and so on. But whether they will allow that or not.
Today's system with somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five plus or minus users who don't drink it, 'cause they provided bottled water in five-gallon jugs, no longer single-serve bottles.
I'm not sure they use single-serve bottles.
Well, we sent them, all I'm just saying is, we sent them in the first purchase, provided by the town, and, you know, and whatever ready, refresh is this supplier. And now we're just giving them the five-gallon jugs, okay? But my point is that that can get us through the end of the year, right? But it doesn't get us any closer to getting the school leadership comfortable and confident that next year's water supply will be suitable for whatever their needs happen to be, which could presumably be, it will certainly be flushing, hand washing, hopefully limited cooking and heating of cooking items, right? And, but unlikely that they'll ever take the wraps off of the bubblers. So, but to get there, so how are we, how do you wanna supply them the water? Bulk water of an unknown amount, because we don't know what the usage is, nor do we even know what the population would be, we can guess that.
We can, we can estimate it, and I think we should go to bid, we don't have to encumber funds to go to bid, right?
If the students are in school, the state will not allow the bulk water over the long term. So if you want the students back in the school, you need to-
You have to define, you have to define long-term or short-term, and-
A year.
Back to Andrew's point.
Yeah.
I'm with you on that, Andrew.
So, you know what, my opinion, Peter, is we go to bid, we see we get for, I mean, we can, we can certainly take a guesstimate on this, I mean, we, we know roughly what it is.
The other question is, if we don't have a water system, and we order it from a place that treats it at its own place, and that's overseen by DEP and stuff, do we still fall under their supervision when we're just ordering water from them without a system?
Yes, if the numbers in the school are enough. If you have twenty-five people and we're using it, you are a public water system wherever the water comes from, and you're, you are subject to all of these regulations.
And they have three vendors that they've authorized, I believe, for bulk water.
Through the state bid list.
And the school got Henchaw Farms or whatever it was, yeah.
Okay, so then the follow-up question would be, wouldn't it be easier to follow their regulations with treated water from bulk?
If their waters, yeah.
I mean, if it's a, a company that's recognized or suggested by DEP, I'm assuming-
You'd be buying the water from Potatka, or, you know, some big, some water system. I mean, it could be Uxbridge.
I doubt that.
Theoretically, well, you're talking ten thousand gallons a week, or thereabouts, two truckload.
They don't have enough as it is, they're both every summer.
I misspoke then, um, not Uxbridge.
No, you're right, that's what we're talking to, they have supply.
They're all just doing every summer, they have water shortages.
And are you thinking of Blackstone, they're the-
No, they-
Everybody does.
Every town has shortages.
Every town does, so.
Might have to drill another well, we'll give them our well.
It rained all summer a couple of years ago, and my town still had the save water, you know?
Drain the swamp.
Once we had water all year.
Pick the beavers out, we'll drain the swamp.
So, I understand the temptation of the bulk water, if you want the students back, I recommend we continue with what I'm-
Would be upwards of a hundred thousand each year, or over, probably.
Certainly first year.
Yeah, the study state should get to a more reasonable cost.
Yes.
Well, what would be reasonable?
Under a hundred thousand, but it's not-
Not reasonable.
Well, it's, given that the state of this business, things are expensive, let me give you a quick example, okay? Who's the Tonic Water Works Company, another one of my clients, they were using the same engineer that you guys were using.
Previously, yep.
Previous, right, previous, and they have manganese, so the community's all upset, so they had to do a pilot study. The DEP made them treat it as though it was a surface water particle filtration, they had to do ten-day pilot study four times, all four seasons. The catch is, the manganese isn't even in the system for all winter, about seven months a year, you see none. And my reading of the policy says, if you, you know, particle filtration, you do exactly what they're having them do. Go to page eight, manganese and iron treatment, you need five days once. DEP totally did something different, and it cost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that engineer charged. This small system, this is a small town, a small village, actually, eight, eight-hundred-and-forty-two customers, so bigger than this, but three of those four pilot studies had no manganese to treat. Pretty sure the third one positive of the first two, waiting to see the data on the third. They just, they just ran this for nothing, and the state knew there was none in advance. So it can get crazy expensive, as that example, and maybe I shouldn't have brought that one up, 'cause I don't wanna offend DEP here today. Too much, but it, it's difficult.
So I think the takeaways are, I will email Mary Jude Pigley to get, try to get support for our participation in the study, if anyone else wants to email her, please do.
I, I recommend that folks go through the Bureau of Drinking Water Chief.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Bostwick?
Bob Bostwick.
Bob Bostwick.
That's who our normal contact would be, the idea that the regional director is involved with this small system so much is interesting.
Okay.
'Cause I don't see that anywhere else, you get the director of drinking water, okay? So just a thought, and then they'll pass it up the line.
Yeah. Okay, and then if anyone else has any questions for Mary Jude Pigley, if you, any of you wanna email her, please do, just please CC Peter, so we kinda get the same eyes, but if any of you wanna meet with her or talk with her, we can, because she was unable to come to the meeting tonight. But I don't wanna, you're all encouraged to do so, just make sure Peter's there for consistency, that's my only request, I don't need to be there. Jerry, did you have a question for Dr. Gulick?
I just had one comment, I'm assuming, doctor, that there's a relationship between the student count at any facility and the amount of water that's being used, there must be some-
Absolutely.
Must be some sort of relationship with that. If that is the case, I heard you mention that, what you said, the size we have right now is greatly oversized, you said by six times greater than we need.
More than that, that, that's just, that's potentially up to six times just for the flow rate allowed through the unit. But then the unit's only used a couple hours a day, maybe only an hour a day is really what's needed, we run it more than that, because we, we need to keep it running, try to get this-
I understand, I understand, I guess my concern, my concern is, how the hell do we build a system that's over six times greater than was necessary? And if it's based on the relationship that one kid equals one gallon of water, and you're gonna have five hundred kids, and you should have five hundred gallons, why the hell do we build one that's thirty thousand gallons, and I'm just using a round number system?
I do not know why it was designed in that size.
You wouldn't, because you weren't here at that time, so that question is a, is a rhetorical question, but one that needed to be asked, at least from my mind, what the hell are we doing with a system that big?
I have the same question.
You had mentioned the question, Richard, is there an opportunity to take that system down in size? Making it more efficient, more effective, more affordable for us to work with, relative to have this gigantic system that you're gonna put hoses out in the yard to flush all the water out? Doesn't make any sense.
Just to use it, no, it seems wasteful.
From what I heard you say, I'm not gonna hold you to it, 'cause it's a public meeting, but you said that it would be relatively less expensive to do that with a smaller system, they'd be more appropriately sized to the four hundred kids that may go there, if that's the number, I don't know, that number'd have to come from the school. So we should right-size the school, uh, student population to what it is that we have for a system. 'Cause I understand that you've got a six-time greater system than what you have for the, for the amount of kids that are there, that makes no sense to me. Just, just a comment, just thought I'd mention it, 'cause I think it makes some sense.
It's def, definitely more than six times for what's there now, many times more.
And you know, Jerry, I, when I'm thinking about this, it's like, look to the data, it seemed like the system worked before, and then we had a spike. So I, I don't understand how it was working at six times the size, and all of a sudden, it's, it's too big, I-
Can I just clarify, 'cause I'm confused, you're, you're not saying that the system is six times the size needed for the school population. You're saying that the system is way oversized for the current population of twenty-five users.
Way oversized for that, but it's oversized for the school, they weren't running it all the time, it would go on and off during the course of the day.
Yeah, and they, but, but, but they also never had a full, you know, they were at forty percent usage of the school, empty seats and all that sort of-
They also wasted a lot, used a lot of water in the rinsing and backwashing.
Yes.
Which I'm now doing as a means to use water, so I increased that rinsing today, it didn't need to be near that much.
But, but is so, but is it, so, are you saying that it's fair to say that it's six times oversized for the school population that one would expect there, say, four hundred students?
It is, that the gallons per minute that it's operating at, which is only for portion of the day, but that six gallons a minute could potentially be up to thirty-six, depending on how the performance works, that's just for how fast it goes through the greensand, the eighteen inches of greensand, okay? That's only one aspect of it, the other aspects include, they're running six to seven hours a day with the students in session, but a third of that water-
Was backflow.
Was backwash water, and they didn't need near that much, so you probably only needed, you know, four hours a day, so there itself suggests it could have run, you know, six times in that case, so there's a couple ways that show it's six times or so.
I just wanted to make the statement, it just seemed illogical to, I like, at least the comment you had, that maybe a smaller town sizing the system may be more efficient and effective and-
We run, I'd rather have it run all the time.
I agree.
Because this start-stop hurts.
Otherwise, you gotta keep shocking it, and that causes this thing to do this, it's gonna be all out of, I got you. So you need to right-size the system, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
That may be one of, that may be the best answer, I'm not sure yet.
And that's if we choose to double down on this and try to fix the well.
That's correct.
And then we're, we're looking at over a hundred thousand this year. Big money.
That's a problem.
Indeed.
Big money for forty thousand dollar budget.
That budget was under-budgeted.
Big time.
I'm sorry to say, given the analytical costs that were there, no, we're making these cheaper. We cut back a bunch of the analytical monitoring a couple of years ago, we've cut back a little more, not to the point where it hurts what we're looking for, but there were just a lot of extra samples. We also don't over, we don't surcharge you on the analytical data, I don't, so it comes straight lab costs, so that's dropped ten percent or something.
How many of those tanks are there, the greensand tanks?
Two.
Any opportunity to shut one off?
I'm working on possibly doing that.
That might help.
I would like that, I have not been, unfortunately, the regional contractor for working on those happens to be the former engineer. So I have not heard from somebody from a different state, I'm waiting to hear back, and I can get them to come and help me with the controls of it. But we're studying, and that is an, an option, potentially, if the control heads can deal with that, and it just, you know, stops instead of switching to the other one, I'm not sure quite, I haven't seen how to program that in the manual yet. And that's one of the things that takes time, it's one, not only do we not have all the manuals for the equipment, but once you find them, then you gotta read them, and learn, you know, learn those, the details of the equipment. So there's a lot of different options, and I appreciate the concept of potentially shutting it down, or saying heck to this, or it's too expensive. You know, there's a lot of obstacles, add in between the DEP and, you know, and trying to convince that school leadership, it's, it's not easy. I still believe that the water quality can be fixed, it worked for years, until they lowered, until they had too much chlorine, and got a violation, and then lowered it too much, and, and got manganese coming out, and it did this. I think it can be done, and I think it can be done better than it used to be. But it's gonna apparently take a little longer, and I had first thought, we'll see how it goes when I got the online data now. So by the time, you know, if you go and look for bids on the bulk water, by the time you get done, maybe I'll have better answers. Takes a while to get lab data back, too.
Yeah.
Don't wanna pay rush fees.
Nope. All right.
It's not easy, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gulick, we really appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you, I was there all day, so it wasn't- Now I'm gonna check on it before I leave.
All right. Okay, is Sarah on for the ARPA update?
That's Tim, she's online there, Tim?
Yeah, I emailed her.
Okay, I'll hand out what she's gonna present.
So this is the ARPA page?
I don't think they have that yet, so. Here, there's three for them.
Hi, everyone.
Pass that down.
Thank you. I thought something was wrong with my glasses. It was upside down, I did the same.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to fix something.
There we go.
There she is.
The left side got cut off here, Peter.
Okay, talk again, Sarah.
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great.
All right, so Sarah, over to you, what do you have for us?
All right, great, so my presentation is much shorter and less controversial, I think, than the last, so thanks for having me tonight. In front of you, you have a ARPA spending to date, so we have broken it down by each of the fiscal years, so the completed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then year to date for twenty-four. And we've added all those up, giving you the spending to date, and then at the last column, we have the balances of what has already been approved by this board. So when you add up the spending to date and the balances, those equal the allocated funding, and actually, I'm just realizing, I should probably share my screen, oh, it's disabled, okay. So, in that case, I will not.
Yep.
Tim's gonna make it, so you can share your screen.
Awesome, thanks for all your help, Tim.
You're right, it doesn't show the names of the items.
I can, I can tell how much they are by the amounts.
All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. I did reorganize the items on the list, just to put them in alphabetical order, I thought that might be easier to read through, as well as grouping them, you know, the library together, the senior center together, the police station together, 'cause I noticed in our original list, they were sort of piecemeal. So, again, just to run through for everybody now that I'm sharing, we have our, our spend to date, and then we have the balance. Those two columns equal the total that has been approved through June twentieth of this year. You'll notice that we do have a couple of line items that are overspent, but again, right now, with the items that are underspent, we're still even across the board, and I anticipate that that will likely continue moving forward.
Okay. And then Peter and I were reviewing this earlier, Sarah, and we think we might have a little bit of a cushion, for example, in the top line, 'cause we've only spent forty- in the top line, because we've only spent $41,000 out of that 140 allocated. So I don't know that we'll spend the remaining, almost the $99,000 or so. So that will give us a little bit of a cushion to put into other areas, should we need to.
Absolutely. I do think that that spending is gonna go a little bit quicker now, as I have additional capacity, which is
Great.
I think a positive thing.
Yes.
So, but I agree, there's definitely gonna be a cushion in that line item, and potentially a few others. You know, the fire station upgrades, you all discussed an $8,000 security system upgrade, but that hasn't been spent yet, and it's the only thing that is currently allocated towards that 25. I'm sure there's plenty more to upgrade at the fire station, but you know, that's just one kind of, that's in my mind, that's fresh, where it's not specifically every single penny is allocated at the moment.
Okay. And we have our building inspector here tonight for our next agenda item, but I remember for the fire, for the police station upgrades, we set aside $75,000, probably down at the bottom, there it is. And we spent $78,000, $60,000 out of that so far, so we could look at, perhaps the building inspector move before our next meeting? Could walk through the, meet with Chief Lillard and Chief Coop, and be like, you know, we have this money, what are you looking to do? And make sure that it's a reasonable, what we've allocated is reasonable for what they want to have done.
Yeah, a couple of key takeaways. You, back in June, you did make some adjustments, you tweaked some things. We do something by, like, take the police command vehicle, you had, there was 45 previously approved. You dropped that down because we got a grant for 25, so that's all reflected in what's approved now, those changes that have previously been made. And this is everything that you've either approved. There were some items initially that were before Board of Selectmen were approving things. Those have been captured in the FY '22 spending, some of those, but they're reflected in the totals that were approved. The other key takeaway is what you've spent to date. You got $955 ARPA money is available, basically, spent $360, almost 600 grand remains, so who knows how it ultimately all gets used for some of the bigger line items. And so like Sarah said, yeah, she has been less than available in the current charges, she's that top line item, but she has ramped up a bit, and we need her to be ramped up a bit.
Yes.
Probably not to the extent of the total thing, so that's the one that impacts her the most. Likewise, we have some ARPA money there for the MES water and consulting. So I get the invoices from Dr. Gullik that are broken up by operations versus ARPA. And, you know, the ARPA is more for the consulting on his part, plus some of the doodads we've had to buy. So the, you know, adding the remote monitoring is, we used ARPA money to pay for that. And contemplated in there was the possibility of switching to granular activated carbon filters, for example. That's part of that line item down there, so it's still, you know, it doesn't have a lot left in it, but doesn't have multiple years of activity at the current rates, but there's some remaining.
So we got almost $40,000 remaining.
Yes.
Yep.
If we do decide to double down on the well, that might be some money that we can
Yep.
allocate towards shutting off one of those green sand tanks.
Yep.
Drop in the bucket.
It is, Andrew, drop in the bucket.
Pardon the pun.
Keep the water and puns coming.
Yeah.
So any other questions for Sarah on ARPA funds?
I mean, I guess one question, it's not really like pressing at the moment, or we probably won't know, but I'm assuming the 250 is the town hall, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, we haven't done much work, but do we suspect that would ever go over? Just in case, because I'm thinking, like, if that one did go over, that might be more than a little bit.
So we were hoping for, we had applied for a grant, we just got word late Friday that we did not get the grant funding. And that's for the old town hall roof repair, is what we had asked on the grant, right? So I think the thinking has been, as we talked, if absent the grant, we're gonna go out, and Joe will talk a little bit more about that, but this, this would only be a portion of what we think it's gonna cost. We, you know, the other piece of it is probably, you know, we think it'll cost maybe, if we can do it for 500, that, we think that's a win for, for, I'll call it reviving.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Right?
Yep.
Repair and reuse. It's not renovation, and it's not, you know, rebuild. It's revive, by way of repair and reuse. Okay, so it's limited scope effort, okay? And if 500 grand can cover that, the other piece of it would likely have to come out of stabilization funds. And so we won't know what the real costs are going to be yet, but Joe will talk about what our strategy is on that, right? In terms of some preliminary bid efforts to get some, a better idea under prevailing wages, what the roof replacement cost is, as well as the cost of cleaning up the building and painting and stuff like that, as well as putting in a concrete floor down in the basement and converting to an adjunct to the police station, okay? So those pieces will have a better idea so that we can come to the annual town meeting to ask voters to approve the additional amount beyond the 250. That's sort of the, where the train's going on that, and I don't mean to steal Joe's thunder.
Yeah, I know.
He's the, he's been, and he's been very instrumental in any effort we've done to be smart about how to go about this, how to repair and reuse the building, and the efforts to do that, and the experts that he's been able to bring in to make us smarter on that.
Okay.
So any other questions for Sarah before we bring up Joe?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry, you can stay or you can drop, you won't hurt our feelings.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
And so moving on to Old Business Foresee, so we have old town hall repair and reuse update from Joe Fitzpatrick, our building commissioner, I believe, now.
Yes, he's a commissioner. He's a, he's an official commissioner, did his homework, took the test, and passed it, I guess, after first try.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
You went for me, too?
Thank you, Joe.
You marked where the commissioner's office is going to be.
The biggest room.
The biggest room, right?
Some goals you might want to hit, and I put some dates in there, so one we might look at.
Nice, so it's kind of my little project plan.
All right. I miss a one.
It's all right.
I can share with Peter.
So the first, the first print I have, if you open up the E1, the big print, that shows the basement of the town hall.
Okay.
This area that's marked over here, you say, this is 1368 square feet, that's circled. This small print that's on top, I took some dimensions this weekend and drew this out to give you an idea to kind of take someone to pressure off the police station. This one with the, one facility in it would be the women's restroom. There's a shower, sink, three lockers. The other one would be next to it, is for the males, okay? That would take care of the area that the police officer would be able to change and get ready for shifts, whatever they want to do. Off of that, this, you see a door, there's two doors. The first one is you come in from the hallway. The second one is a storage area, which would be for the police to use whatever they want. That's total concrete, locked up. They can do what they want with it. There's a small office there, and then the other area, they could use it as a workout area for the police, or something that would give them something to retain them, okay? So that's where that comes in. That other big area you see on that bottom print, that's the crawl space, okay? And then what I did is I went through, on this, other ones from prints that we had drawn up by some engineers, you'll see the handwritten numbers in there, that's the size of these rooms, just as the town hall is laid out right now. All right, so the first one is your first floor, okay? And then if you go to the next one, it's the second floor. This one that's marked classroom is where the, that's where the roof failed.
Okay.
Okay? Now, I spent a lot of time up in there looking at that, and look, there's satellite views on it. This room, this roof does not seem to have moved since somebody did the fixes on it. And that was back when Billy Robbins was the building inspector. See, years ago, he did it, it hasn't moved, okay? So it's stabilized. We went out and contracted with the engineer. And the next print is showing you the area with the lines, that's that classroom. Taking that off, there's a brick wall that comes up, which was the original structure. From that wall towards Central Street, we're moving that roof section. The last page shows you the truss design is what they would put up there, replaced with trusses. And what that does is, the system that's there now is designed that the loads are on the side wall, so when the bottom cord failed, now your loads on the roof wanted to push the wall out. By putting the trusses in there, all your loads now are straight down, so that there's no more sideways pushing on it.
Okay.
And that's the fix on it. So where we're at right now is, the first thing we gotta do, from what I'm seeing, is you gotta get the heat back on.
Okay.
Okay, you got two tanks of oil over there that'll fall. Let's get some of the units and get these boilers fired up. Because with it being shut down and the constant temperature change has caused that paint to literally leap off the walls. I mean, it's interior paint, it's not designed for that. And when you started expanding contractions, it's lost its base, and it's coming off. So that would be my, the first thing I would suggest we do. Then we can look at the lead removal, asbestos, okay? These are all things that can be taken care of. And as far as the roof, I'll wait until spring, because you're going into bad weather.
Yeah.
You don't want to be doing that now. So let's take care of anything that I've outlined here as 2023. We can look at those and get those done. Certain areas of it can be repainted right now, except for that big room where we're repairing the roof. You take that apart, that tin, the tin seal, unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be able to save it. So that would be a suspended seal in that room. The rest of the sealings in the building, we can certainly salvage those. That's a matter of either blasting them with the dry ice to get the paint off it, and then repainting them, so. That's pretty much, you know, where we're at with the building, so.
And there's no, Joe, there's no historical limitations for this building, correct?
I've checked that out.
You researched that carefully, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
So the, the thing that I recommended to Peter was to get a better handle as to what this price is gonna be. I'd like to do some preliminary bids on it.
That'd be great.
And send it out, and again, Peter's the procurement officer for the town, so the bids would come into him, but let's get a real idea as far as what it's gonna take to do it. I'd be happy to put the scope of work together and work with the guys that want to see what they're gonna do and explain to them, and then all bids would be sent to Peter.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so that's our next step. We were waiting on what the state was gonna do before we started chasing that down, but now we know.
So Peter, what are you thinking, going out to bid and then making a multi-year, multi-year bid for this, breaking it into pieces?
So I'm not sure. I think we want to break it into pieces of discrete efforts, right? So one is the roof replacement. Now Joe's talking about doing the painting first, so we'll need to talk about that some more. And I'm not disagreeing, I just, we, you know, the first I'm hearing of that, in terms of trying to do that now and turning the heat on, because the building is pickled, it's a very low-cost insurance that requires it to be pickled, so there's insurance ramifications of what that step might be. But the other piece is whether we, whether we, I think we're trying to find the, redo the inside piece separate from the roof piece is, and preliminary bids versus hard bids until we go to town meeting and have, make sure we get all the money available between ARPA and town meeting. That's the way I would look at it, right?
But again, I mean, like I said, we go preliminary bids where you do anything.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then you can add all the numbers together and say, okay, it's, to do this thing, we want to do it, it's X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
And we have on the lease, just so you know, for this building, I think we're through the end of May 26th, so.
They're gonna ask for a series of quotes and then basically come back to the table?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna get preliminary quotes, no commitment attached to it. But it's gonna give us an idea of what the prevailing wage, that's, that's the moving number, it's the prevailing wage. Because you really don't know what that number is nowadays.
Yeah.
So go out to people, and I've had one guy, a painter, come in, he's looking at it, we haven't got the numbers back yet, but I tell him all, it's gotta be a prevailing wage job, so we tell him that upfront.
Yes, I'm gonna be curious what he comes back with on that one. But we have the engineering done for the roof already, and that was actually pretty reasonable cost, and that's in your ARPA summary.
$5,000.
$5,000, and he's contracted to come back, PE put a stamp on it that it was done properly and of course with the drawings, so.
The engineer on site for the roof repair, which is really all we need him for.
Very short money.
As far as the other reports that you've got from, I've gone through them all, read them all, and I was just in the town hall, matter of fact, this weekend, and people say there's mold over there, it's musty, but I haven't seen any mold growing in these areas that we're talking about.
Okay.
So if you're going to crawl space, there's some cardboard in contact with the dirt, yeah, you can see a little bit on there. But as far as you go in that room downstairs, no. Put an air exchange in, and you're gonna handle that with a Smith floor and the proper vapor barrier underneath it, it should handle it.
And in terms of the HVAC, we're, earlier on, we talked about replacing the HVAC system. That's not what we're currently contemplating. It's utilizing the existing heating system. There are some window air conditioners and whatnot, but we'll face that challenge. As far as wiring and things like that, you know, it will require, it's, you know, the move will require setting up the capabilities we have here for phone and security and, you know, video conferencing and so forth, so.
As far as the lighting out there, there is some stuff through National Grid you can get. They'll come in and relight the place for you. They'll change all the lights over.
Oh, nice.
So there is, there is some stuff out there to give you relief on price, so that you're not gonna be footing the whole bill.
Okay.
Yeah, all the cameras and like, like, security cameras and like, cameras for meetings, were those taken out?
I don't know, I don't know that. I think they may still exist, you know, whatever.
If they're outdated.
This is all new, you know, added to this place. Tim's here, he may.
I moved all the meeting stuff here.
Okay.
Because then we'd have to spend tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Thanks, Tim.
But I think it, you know, it's got the possibility of leaving the problem you have with the police station, too, because that, what they're using as a locker room now, they wouldn't need it.
Yeah, I've seen it. So are there any, so the engineers come in and looked at the structure of the building, and it can be salvaged, it's safe and all that stuff?
The engineer that looked at the roof,
Okay.
he's a structural engineer, so he's the guy that looked at it. That's what I wanted, I didn't want a electrical engineer, even though they can cross-study with their profession, so I wanted a structural engineer to look at it. And he's the one that looked at it and said, there's no problem.
Yep, so we can fix the building and use it. So now the only barrier now, of course, is cost. That's the barrier for everything in Millville.
So.
It's a shame that the state has no money to give, no extra money for education, no extra money for stuff like this, but we can rent hotels like their popcorn. That's disgusting, and in November, we need to put an end to it when we vote.
I think we all, I, Emily, I think we can reach out.
I hope the governor's office hears that.
Sorry for interrupting you, Ron.
Disgusting.
It's a good thing we don't have a hotel here in Millville.
Questions for me?
Oh, one quick question, actually. The stuff that's labeled as 2023, if we, like, assuming we get the bids and like, we are able to start the work, how long would that take? To like, do, do you not have like a ballpark of like?
I don't have it, you know, again, I put down 23 on it because, again, the roof can't be taken off till spring.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, what can we do in the meantime to get a jump on the whole project? That's what the dates are in there for.
Okay, so those are like the start dates more, so then?
Yeah, in other words, that would be, okay, if we wanted, say, we said, okay, let's do this month, let's get something going. We could look at these areas and say, okay, what do you want to start on that, okay? That's basically what those dates were for.
Okay.
Just to give you a timeline, what should we do first?
Okay, gotcha.
Good, sounds good. Okay, well, I think we can. Okay, well, I think we can reach out to Senator Fatman and Representative Soder and see if there's anything for this building, because they have been really kind to us. So we can see if maybe there's an opportunity in the budget for next year, but.
Would BVT be interested?
And none of that was directed to those two.
Yes, I know.
Maybe BVT?
And they know, they know how.
They might be able to reach out to the school.
Ever can tell.
And see if they, if they would be interested in.
In a project, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, definitely.
Joe's been doing a great job and I truly appreciate his.
Thank you so much.
Expert eye he brings to this stuff, too.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Joe.
All right. So moving on to new business, so special town meeting warrant, everyone should have a copy. There it is. So the special town meeting is on Wednesday, November 1st, at the Millville Elementary School at 7:00 PM.
So in your, in my transmittal to you the other day, information, I mentioned that you, we had talked previously of an article for the Board of Health Agent. Also, as a Board of Health member, also serving as a Board of Health Agent. Interacting further with council, turns out you can only do that at an annual town meeting. So that's been removed. And council, I asked for advice in terms of operating the status quo, which is the dual roles functioning today. And the risk is limited, so continue, carry on, I guess is the advice on that. So, but it's not, so you're down to eight articles. One's the standard monetary increase that is to satisfy, you know, folks have to identify a funding source if they're going to recommend a change, okay? And so that's one that the Finance Committee at their public hearing, they would be voting on as well. Bills of a prior fiscal year, you'll see in your packet, a whole bunch of scribbles on invoices from NWSI. There's two NWSI invoices as adjusted, based on my adjustments for charges that were unauthorized or inconsistent with prior practice and agreements. So I adjusted those. And so the amounts that I would propose to bring forward are the adjusted amounts on the last page of those, each of those two invoices that are there, okay? Separately, there's an invoice there for FY24, which has been put through and I have the check waiting to go. So the specific amounts might change and looking closer, if you all see something on that or whatever that concerns you from my adjustments, but I did take a very keen eye and close look at that, okay? And so I, I am not aware of any other prior year adjustments, but in your packets, you'll see there's the, you know, the spending to date by accounts. And, you know, all the other departments seem to be tracking just fine. I think the fire department later in the year may encounter some challenges, but nothing to suggest changing their budget today. Nothing to suggest changing. The only one that popped out was, you see the COA van drivers already used, you know, almost half of their budget for the year for that line item. It's not what voters approved, they approved the whole department line item.
So they can move stuff around.
It's still something to be concerned about in terms of utilization. And they do track some information on their use and so forth. And I think it's just a question of, you know, I know they asked for more money in that line item anyway, but that's, that's the only one that pops out is kind of tracking a little bit skewed on that. We'll be talking about the Police Department budget later this evening in the executive session. So the budget is, I'm not suggesting any changes to the budget, okay, for town, special town meeting. It would only be for MES water. And that's a, that's a fluid number, ha, ha, ha. So I think somewhere, somewhere between 42 and 52 would be the number that I would recommend. I wouldn't necessarily recommend too much more than that. One of the questions is what objections voters might have to whatever number is put forth to them. And if you ask for too much that we don't need, it's just going to go back into free cash. So it's, it's turned back, it's not a real exposure if you ask for too much. And if we ask for too little, we still have May 1st, where you can start moving things around from other accounts that are in surplus, okay? The real key is to, I think Dr. Gullik's sensitive to the cost, but the cost, it does take time and, and money for that time of professionals. So, so my number is either 42 or 52 for that budget adjustment in Article 3. Again, another one for, you know, Finance Committee to be voting on. Then you have the feasibility study, that's another one for Finance Committee to vote on on their public hearing. It is, as you see there, a borrowing, 126 grand. There have been some questions about whether you take it out of stabilization and just pay it all upfront. But we, we had Dr. DeFalco in and asked that question at the meeting when they presented this article. And they're going to use bond anticipation notes in the interim for which there's interest charges that are treated as capital debt for the town. And that is included in their assessments every year. So it's, they'll ultimately bond it or roll it into part of the project, whatever project does transpire. And again, be allocated or assessed back to the town under the regional agreement as capital item. So it's not something you can write the check for today. How it's spent, it's all done at the BMR district level. How they're using the money, how they're spending it, and they're asking it by way of a borrowing. You see the Planning Board articles that they came and presented to you all. And then the last one, which is Article 8, is the correction of a prior year's article. Last annual town meeting, the state came, the State Attorney General's office came back and said, you need to be more precise about the number of years over which one could create an agreement on a tax title agreement, as well as the discount rate that one could have on the interest charges. And so there's precision there, working with the treasurer, five years and 50%. That's more an administrative correction to the article previously approved by the voters. And that's all there is.
Quick question, the bills of prior fiscal year, what was the amount?
So the amounts would be, it would be invoice 11032 for NWSI. And I have to go to the total because it's a lot. It's, you know, it's like 10,000, I haven't summarized it. It's MES water, one piece was ARPA. So let me say that again, it's 7,400 bucks approximately for invoice 11032. That'll be specifically identified and the specific amount will be identified. And then invoice 11033 is 14,325. And that's as adjusted by my hieroglyphics.
And then invoice 11055 is?
Is FY24.
Okay, so that's not.
That's just informational only.
So that's not going to be included in the.
So 21,725 is what I came.
There you go, good.
Okay.
And the other amounts of those invoices will remain in dispute.
And then that fire truck invoice?
That's a FY23 cost that has, is not going to be a prior year bill. And it doesn't require a warrant article. Because it was paid, that it was one of these where the treasurer wired the money before the fiscal year was determined. So it's paid, so it's not, it's going to be taken out of the tax recap in December. And we've worked with the accountant, the auditor on that as well, just to make sure we've done it properly. And so if you approve the warrant, the, I have seven copies you each have to sign.
Okay.
And I don't know whether you wish to make recommendations on each of the items this evening. You really don't have another meeting to do that.
And we have to schedule another meeting, so I think we should do that as well. So you can go through the articles and I'll look for a motion. Do we want to read? Do we have to read all these? I'm not so worried about any except for number eight.
I don't think you need to read them. It's, you know, it's, the warrant is presented to you.
Okay. All right. So I think that we should make a motion to recommend. And then a yes vote is you agree with that, and then a no vote is you don't agree with that. And that way it's, it'll be, recommend, it'll be like 5-0 or 3-2 or 1-5 or whatever it is. And that way the first number is who recommended and second, that's why, or 1-4, sorry, I said 1-5, that's not 6, that's 1-4. That keeps it straight.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I will make a motion to recommend Article 1 monetary increases.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Okay, so seeing none, I will call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew? All right. You all recommend number one. Article 2, I will make a motion to recommend bills of prior fiscal year with an approximate amount of $21,725.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
You're swimming along. Okay, Article 3, fiscal year 2024 budget adjustments. And this will be in between a 42,000 and 52,000 dollar increase for MES water expenses. I'll make a motion to recommend Article 3. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
Okay, Article 4 is to recommend 126,950 borrowing for the BMR feasibility study. So I will make a motion to recommend this article. Looking for a second?
Second.
You do, Roland? So I guess in terms of discussion, though, a couple of things that I want to make sure people are clear on is, I think getting the information is good. I don't know that people see the information, then will vote for the school. But I, if you know you're going to vote no on the school and like, there's communities not going to support the school, I don't know that we would want to spend this money. So if the community is going to support the school, we want to spend the money. So if you're like, oh, I'm voting for the school, I'm voting for it, I guess I just worry about getting the feasibility study. I do want the data to make a decision. Like, I, I need that before I can say yes or no, one way or the other, and I hope a lot of people are like that. But if you're like, no, 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 then we shouldn't waste the money. And Peter, is there a way to get this out of stabilization so it doesn't impact voters or?
So again, it's their, their spending the money. And they're present, and they're, they're doing a borrowing on anticipation notes initially. And they're presenting to the town this article that, in the way they've written it. So I don't know how, how practical it would be to get it out of stabilization. You're really, it's going to be in your operating, your annual operating budget every year as part of the debt service.
So this would be divided by 30 or something?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
30 years?
Well, it depends on what they borrow, you know, whatever borrowing they might do, they would bundle it with a borrowing. Let's say they did a, let's say they didn't do the big project, but they did some repairs to one of the schools and it was a $2 million repair project or something. Or they, they would bundle this with that and go out to bond and do it over 15 years or 10 years or whatever they decide to do. So it's somewhere between 10 and 30 years that you, you would normally see, especially if they get into the bigger project, I'm sure it's 30 years that they would be dealing with.
So to be honest, no one's really going to feel this.
No.
Because 126, I'll call it 127,000 over 30 years divided by however many homes it's going to be.
And they've, and keep in mind, they've already put 500 grand aside of their E and D, excess and deficiency, which is our free cash equivalent.
Yeah, to alleviate the burden to the towns.
So they've already done that.
Okay.
That's just taking it out of one tax pocket and, you know, versus this one. It's really town money at the end of the day, right?
Yes.
So the one, well, first off, I think it would be felt by the taxpayers. But beside that, this would be just to get an understanding of what they wanted to do.
Correct.
Because right now, they, they don't even know what they want to do.
Right.
That's a lot of money to decide what you want to do on a project where you have really no clue how much it's going to cost, what the scope of the project's going to cost, or what you're going to do with any of the buildings you have. They don't even have answers to those.
That's true.
That's a lot for a, it's, it's like going out to buy a car and buying, paying the full amount of buying a car and then saying, I don't know which car I'm going to buy, I'm just going to, you know, go to the dealership eventually and then pick one out. You've got to have a plan before you spend well over, because this is just one part of this.
But, but, but they did go to Mass School Building Authority with their expression of interest specifically to basically develop a new Blackstone Millville Regional High School. That's, and that's the wording they're even using here in this feasibility study to explore that, which then they committed in person, but you don't read it here in the words, that they're going to look at all options on the table, after which one of the options is doing something to the high school, funded in part, up to 59% from what I understand, from MSBA, because they're in the program. But the feasibility study is, is to do a new high school, right?
Yes.
And, and they already know the mag, that based on the consultant they've hired, based on per square foot, per student types of things, you know, cost per student, per square foot, they're estimating it's somewhere in the order of a $90 million in two years ago numbers, high school project. And then, so then the question is, is a feasibility study of $1 million, because that's really what you're talking about, a reasonable amount of what the market charges for that kind of study? My guess is it probably is. I don't know for sure, I'm guessing.
No, no, my main point, though, here is, is that it's, a better analogy, I guess, would be putting down a down payment for a house, but having no clue what you wanted in your house. You have to have some sort of idea of what you want to do, you know? Like, if you had a house, you would be like, oh, do I want a pool? Do I want how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms? Like, they don't have any of those specifics. They don't even know if they want to get rid of one of their buildings, even though their capacity is only what, 50%?
40%.
40%?
But they, I don't know if you recall, the packet last meeting had that synopsis from their studies and their couple of years of effort of different committees saying, and it got to the two school option is the preferred option.
Yes, but they're also working.
Speaks to what you're.
Well, in that same report, they're also using numbers saying that, based on no data, that the enrollment would stay stable or go up, which hasn't happened in over a decade. So I don't know what they were basing that off. So I don't, like, I don't, I don't understand how you can ask for a million dollars and not really have any foggy idea of what you're going to do and just hoping that you're going to pay consultants to tell you what you want. That's not a brilliant plan when you're paying upwards of $90 million for a project.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know many people who would do that with their own finances.
Well, I don't mean to answer for the school anyway.
I know, I know, I'm not, I'm not directing it towards you. I know.
Some background, yeah.
So.
I got my own feelings. A lot of high schools in the Commonwealth that were built in the 60s and are still open and functioning fully and have been renovated and brought up to, so they're almost like a small university when you walk in the door.
Well, that could be the outcome.
I went to one of them.
No, I mean, when we were at BBT, you know, Roland and Claudia pointed out.
I was trying not to use names.
Yeah, no, but he pointed out, it's like, this is older than the BMR high school, I know. So I guess this is to get that answer, though, like that maybe it will be a $40 million renovation instead of a $90 million project. I mean, I think there's difficulty in decision-making and they're looking at someone else. Like, a year ago, right now, they tried to close the complex and that didn't go over well. So then, you know, we fabricated a water situation to move the kids out of Millville. So I did that. So this is a way to get a definitive answer. It's expensive, Andrew, to get a definitive answer, but it'll be an answer.
And the other thing is, is that once we pay this. And the other thing is, is that once we pay this much more, this much money, we're just gonna throw it away. Because I mean, once they submit a project, then what and we say, oh, that's too expensive or that doesn't make any sense.
No, that's what I was saying initially. Like, if you're not gonna vote for the project, because it's too expensive, then.
But that's the problem is that we're then stuck. So no matter what they come back with, we're kind of stuck with it.
Yes, that will be in our operating budget.
So.
Forever.
I mean, I'd rather see some idea, a basic outline at least of anything of what they're looking for.
Solution.
But so they wouldn't do that. They said they wouldn't do that.
So if you, if we don't do the study, then we stay with the complex and the three other buildings.
Yeah.
That we can't occupy.
I mean, if they.
Right? Or you do the study and then maybe maybe the study comes out and says, close the complex. It's the oldest one in the district.
Yeah.
Millville's the second oldest, second newest. Hartner is the newest. Renovate the high school, keep those other two buildings and sell or lease the complex.
Yeah.
A charter school or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, that would be a plus plus for us, you know, but if we don't do the study, we'll never know. Then we're stuck with the four buildings that we can't afford to maintain.
There's no decision.
Because they need, well, Hartner and MES not necessarily, but the other schools need lots of ADA compliant, um, um, you know, renovations. You know, not not really cosmetic stuff, but the ADA stuff, which is very important, and you always have to be on top of that. So we could be on the hook for millions of dollars there. So I'm not in favor of spending money, as as people may know, but um I'm I was raised frugal and I married frugal. And that's the way I'll always be, but sometimes you gotta bite the bullet, spend a little bit in advance to see if if.
To see what the answer is.
What direction you really need to go in.
You also don't know how much it's gonna cost if you, they want to do this ten, fifteen years down the road. It could be more expensive then.
Right. Well, two years ago, I'm I'm in construction, so two years ago, ninety million, we're at a hundred and ten this right now. Easily, easily.
Yeah.
Just in the cost of materials that I purchase, it's it's double.
So in twenty twelve, the Uxbridge High School, a hundred and ten thousand square feet was a forty five million dollar project, a whole new building. And we're looking at double that for a renovation.
Yeah.
So that's.
Well, the other thing is, is that that number we've been doing, they didn't even give us, we estimated that in a meeting.
Yeah.
So that wasn't their number. That's our number, which we 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 estimated from what you said, which is so we have no clue what their thinking is.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is that we have how many buildings, four buildings, schools? And how much is their capacity? And they haven't closed one. They haven't even entertained the idea of that. I mean, before you start building or renovating existing buildings.
Yeah, I mean, they tried that a year ago right now for the complex and the there was, they couldn't pull it off. That was the first attempt at closure was looking at the capacity and they were gonna keep Millville.
But if the if this study
Comes back and says.
To the MSBA and the district.
I think they'll have more weight.
To go, it'll, you know, if 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 MSBA's funding depends on us going with the recommendation from this study, that'll help decide what to do with the complex.
Yeah, for sure. All right, I'm going to call for the vote unless there's any further discussion.
Nah, we beat that horse.
I think we did. All right, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
I knew that.
Yeah.
Eh, aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. Four one again. That's all right. Andrew, you are our fiscal conscience.
Yeah, I have to vary up the votes sometimes.
It can't be all five oh, that'd be boring. Okay, so I will make a recommendation. I will make the motion to recommend Article Five Planning Board Correcting Major Residential Development Definition and Zoning Bylaws. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? It's pretty straightforward. Um, okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. I will make a motion to recommend Article Six Planning Board Expanding Business Uses in Commercial Districts and Protecting Residential Districts from Business Uses.
Second.
It's like a very convoluted thing to read. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Cruising now. Article Seven, I will make the motion to recommend Article Seven, the Planning Board Clarifying Residential Uses in the Zoning Bylaw. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Okay. I will make the motion to recommend Article Eight Bylaw Adoption of Massachusetts General Law Chapter Sixty Section, Chapter Sixty, Section Sixty Two A Municipalities Treasurer Tax Title Payment Plans. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard? Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Now we have to sign all these. Actually, maybe we can do it during executive session while we're all talking.
There you go.
Okay, sounds good. Um, all right, so finalized vote and then the Public Finance Committee Public hearing will be on Wednesday at five o'clock right here. So be there and be square. Um, and then I have seen some discussion around the budget, so I'm just gonna post this. We have our ledger. I'm gonna get it from Peter and post it on my webpage and I'll share it to the community, the other Facebook groups that I participate in. And I guess the only thing I would say is regarding the budget, we spend every penny we have and even like a couple hundred thousand pennies that we don't have. So we would love to increase spending in some ways, but we we just can't unless there's an override or unless we start closing things. Those are the options. Okay. So Hope Dale BBT Meeting Planning. So on October twenty sixth, uh, the Hope Dale Town Administrator, Town Manager invited us to meet with them. I know Roland, did you say you were gonna go to that meeting? You are? Okay. You don't have, I don't mean, I'm checking with you. You don't have to go if you don't want to.
Oh, no, I'm going.
You're going?
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna go also, so that makes two of us enough. One more person wants to go, we need to post a meeting. So does anyone else thinking about going? Even if you're just thinking about it, we can post the meeting and let the town manager know we may need to open up a meeting. Anyone else want to go? Okay, if you don't say, then you can't go now. All right. Roland, I'll be with you. Okay. All right, so Board of Selecting Meeting Planning Policy. So this has come up a couple of times. Um, that to make sure we're following the rules correctly. Like, I know if someone joins by Zoom, we're supposed to post something in a special way, so we need to know beforehand if someone's gonna participate as a Zoom participant. Um, and then also if anyone's presenting anything, I think that that should go to Peter first on the screen just to make sure that, you know, I don't, so we have someone here's eyes on it first, so it's not like all a surprise and there's a bad word here, you know, I don't think that'd be a bad, I don't know, like something just, uh. So any, are there any concerns with those two things that we? Or and is there anything else that we should be adding for people to attend our meetings and participate? Any other? Those are the only two things that just came up like recently that someone participated or Zoom and we found out a little later than we should have.
The only comment I would have is just like if we did have a presentation of some sort to have, if we could have that beforehand, that way we're not like just seeing it for the first time in the meeting.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes there's a lot of information in it. They adjust it all. Yeah, it takes a little.
Eighty nine slides.
For example, when there's eighty nine slides.
Some presenters don't like to give slides out before they present them, and in this case, that's the case.
Yeah, I know. It's not always possible.
I think you did a very good job tonight, Peter, so I want.
Didn't, didn't.
Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Went from eighty nine to eight or eight or nine.
Five. He went right to five and I really appreciate that.
That was good.
Right to the point, very factual. It was good.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was good.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we do we have a meeting planning policy within the policies? Am I amending?
Yeah, so we would be supplementing, adding, inserting a paragraph of some sort is probably what would be.
So I will make a motion that we amend the Board of Selecting Meeting Planning Policy to ensure that Zoom participation and presentation materials that Zoom participation is alerted to the town administrator prior to the meeting, so we can post the meeting correctly, and presentation materials are shared with the town administrator and if possible, the Board of Selectmen for review prior to the meeting as well.
Should we say like forty eight hours and a week prior to the meeting?
What do you, what do you think?
We.
Cause he needs time to read it.
That's true.
Well, he needs time to read it. We need time to read it and we need to also get it to Tim ahead of time to upload it.
Okay, so what do you, well, so we, if our meetings are normally on Monday, forty eight hours would be Saturday. I don't know if that's helpful. Why don't we say the Thursday?
Why don't we do the forty eight hours for like the posting?
Forty eight business hours.
It's the same number, you know, I think, like. That way, if you wanted to add a um item to the agenda, you can
Yep.
Add the information and just haul it one time.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that enough time for you, Peter?
So if I got a Wednesday or Thursday, that would be great. So how do you want to tie it? Yeah, Thursday.
So forty eight, we are make it, yeah, we can align it to the posting of the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. And I will amend my motion to align that these notifications must be made in line with the timing of the posting of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other discussion? That was a good suggestion. I don't know who said it first, but that was good.
He beat me to it.
Did he?
We think alike.
Yeah, great, great minds think alike.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right, cool. We'll amend that. Departments, I see nothing.
Nope.
Public Forum, we actually have people here. Richard, come on up. You are on The Price is Right.
Excuse me? Richard Hurtow, eight Rondan Road, uh, the Green Committee. I'm understanding that we're going to be meeting this coming Wednesday. Um, I've spoke to a Christine Foodie, who was on the Green Committee in the past.
Yep.
And she has voiced her uh concern that she would like to also be on the committee. So I don't know if that has to be done in the form of a motion by the Selectmen. Um, or does she have to be wait till the next election, which would be a shame, I think.
What would be your next BOS meeting?
We can appoint her at the next BOS meeting, but the chair, whoever the chair is of the Green Committee, you can make.
We don't have one yet.
Okay, well, you can make an allowance to attend, because that happened.
We haven't had a meeting yet.
Since July.
Yeah.
So that's okay.
Yeah, what's the hurry? We've got plenty of green energy to do.
Okay.
So as whoever's the chair.
Vote tonight, because we didn't post it.
Yeah, we didn't post it, so we can't, but um.
Next meeting.
Yeah, she can attend your meeting and you can make an um
Recommendation.
The chair can make an allowance and you'll make a motion, because that happened when the.
Zero members to like five.
That's great. That is amazing. I'm so glad we're getting more people to participate.
First.
All right, I spoke with her and uh she was on the Green Committee in the past. And she says there's a lot of potential for the town to make money between the river, solar panels and wind turbines. And that in the past, four or five years ago, she was, that committee was able to obtain a thirty or forty thousand dollar grant for feasibility study and that went somewhere as she doesn't know where it went to. But that's another story. So um I'd like to get that committee going so that we can probably come up with some ideas for the springtime to generate dollars for the town. So there's that. And the other thing is, I've just recently renewed my construction superintendent's license. And one of the things that I was taught during that class is that if there's a building that's in excess of fifty years old, it's eligible for possible grants through historical society, so that's something may want to be looked into for Town Hall, whether it be HVAC or maybe the roof or something. Uh, free dollars, it'd be nice to get for that project.
Okay.
I just say, uh, just have the candidate, the person who was interested in the Green Committee, just send us, uh, Peter an email of interest, so.
Yeah.
That would be good.
And if she could come to a meet, when we have the meeting to appoint, it's great when they can come here, so we can just ask a couple of questions. That is our policy.
Yes.
And just FYI, Sarah, who was speaking tonight by Zoom, she assists us with grants, ARPA administration and other things, including she's uh gonna be a liaison and a support person for the Green
Committee.
Committee, because one of the things she's working on right now is we, we work with CMRPC to submit an annual report. We're required to because of prior grants that we've received. So that's in process for the annual report for FY twenty.
Cause when Christine mentioned the river, uh, the thought of making electricity, solar, wind, uh, possibilities are endless.
Right up her alley as an assistant to what you're trying to.
Mandatory segues for everybody, including Peter.
Segues are awesome.
Any questions for me?
No, I don't think so. Thank you so much for coming, Richard.
Good to see you, Richard.
Good to see you. Anyone else public forum? So excited someone spoke. Any other correspondence, Peter?
So in your correspondence, as one was a letter or an email from uh Chief Montmaney in Uxbridge, trying to get a regional thing with Senator Fatman, a regional group together, dealing with opioid settlement spending and administration or something. The town of Millville did not participate in the opioid settlement in the past, as you you may recall, because uh it was a five hundred and sixty page agreement that had terms that were hard to decipher and and unclear. The amount of the award that based on the percentages and what was understood at the time was about two hundred and sixty five dollars a year. We come to Millville with five hundred and sixty five page agreement requiring the town to do unknown administrative stuff. So but I'll just reach out to Chief Montmaney and say, we didn't participate in the settlement, but might be interested in learning more about what Senator Fatman's trying to do. That's all. So I just, that's in the packets here. And he's trying to put something together in November, end of November, so it's still a ways out. Separately in there is a schedule for the work that's being done on Providence Street that some folks might have already noticed. They're putting in an eight inch water main from uh North Smithfield Water to the select five or six parcels that are uh subject to um uh water that otherwise was being uh filtered but and paid for by a company that owns the property that's blamed for the
Contamination.
Contamination of the water. So that's going on. There's a schedule um in this email talks about when they start, they already started. Um, they've done some excavation that they're working on. They'll keep doing things. So that's in your packet in terms of what that schedule is of both uh in the North Smithfield side as well as over in Millville to get that water. So there'll be some disruption, but from what I understand, uh, there's always access to to the homes on the street.
We live in New England. We're used to rough roads.
Yeah. That's for sure.
Welcome to it.
Okay. Anything else on correspondence?
Nope.
Minutes. The minutes for the first, the fifteenth and, I'm sorry, the first and fifteenth of May and then Tuesday, June twentieth.
And the first, the only thing that you had held up, because you've looked at this now three times, I think, um, was to add in uh names of a couple of folks that, and those names are included now, so. The changes of the name. That one for May first.
So I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May first, twenty twenty three, as presented.
Second.
Yeah, he beat me.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Want to keep it going, Andrew?
Uh, yep. Wait.
May fifteenth, as you recall, that was a joint meeting.
Yep.
Yep. BMR, and this tried to capture the salient points uh related to you all. And but prior to that, you had a an executive session in a separate room. Related to you all, and but prior to that, you had a, an executive session in a separate room.
So I'll make a motion to approve the May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three minutes as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
All right. So I signed these two. I don't know if you wanna-
I have, yeah, you can do that, or I have signature versions if you want, but whatever you want.
Yeah, why don't we do those?
Yeah. And that's, this third set is in there as well, if you do that.
One small thing, which I think we still can approve them, but on page eight of nine, it just has Town Administrator's Report, and then it has Jennifer. I don't know why, is that the reason why that's there, or is it just?
I was the town administrator for that day.
Yeah, that's why I was, I was looking at it, I was like, oh. So, if we could just strike that word, I guess, or is it-
I'm not seeing where you're, page eight of nine, I have, oh, yeah, just get to that, yeah, I'll pull that up.
Strike that.
Yep, we'll do that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the-
Good catch.
Yeah, for the, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three minutes as presented with the noted, um, correction.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew? That's good. Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Three whole minutes done. This is like the productive meeting. All right, Selectmen Reports. Roland, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Richard?
Whole lot of nothing.
Andrew?
Nope.
I guess the only thing I'll just, just say again that I was gonna, because I meant to say it for a second, is that I'll post the ledger, so people can see where the tax dollars go, and the whole budget is seven-point-three million dollars. Um, and as stated, every single penny, even some pennies that we don't have are allocated to that.
Do we dare mention the trunk-or-treating event?
Oh, sure, yeah. Um, October twenty-eighth, at the Millville Elementary School, there's a trunk-or-treat.
I did have that.
They're looking for trunks to participate. So if anyone's, I'm gonna do a trunk. If anyone else wants to do a trunk, great, thank you, Mr. Finn. I don't know if anyone else here is staying at the table, but if there's three of us doing a trunk, then we need to post a meeting.
If I come in a costume, you'll never know.
That's true. But, so if anyone's, if you, anyone else is gonna do a trunk, let Peter know so we can post a meeting.
Dress like Peter, you'll never know.
That would be scary. You don't, there's gonna be little kids here, you don't want to scare them.
That would be amazing. Um, okay, Peter, Town Administrator Report?
Yeah, I really don't have anything. I just, uh, mentioned, uh, I, I look forward to when the Public Safety Committee convenes, because it may start to address some of the things you might be reading on Facebook regarding, you know, certain public safety groups, staffing levels, and issues and things like that, but we'll, we'll get into more.
You know, Peter, it's just so exciting. We're just trying to build up and heighten that, uh, that excitement.
Build the momentum.
Building it, you know?
Build the suspense.
I'm just saying that.
Did you wanna partake in that? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no, well, no, I, I, I'm just, uh, I, I look for that, because that committee, you know, uh, has, uh, could add a lot of value to this, uh, some of the challenges.
Yeah.
And, and I'll tell you, by this meeting, under the original charge of that committee as written and discussed and approved, is the way I would define it, um, and selecting the, the members, one of the, uh, quarterly reports was due this evening, should there be any recommendations to impact the FY twenty-four budget. But we don't have any, so I'm just saying that.
Well, of course, part of that was, you're in negotiations too.
Correct.
And we were possibly thinking of putting a placeholder in.
Yeah, yeah, so we're-
It's kind of an arbitrary number, but I guess that would depend on the expenditure.
Yeah, so we're good, we're talking later, so we're on the, on the, that piece. But I, I'm just talking, I'm speaking more precisely to the Facebook discussions that I saw a limited bit about- Which is not the place to get one's best knowledge, that's all.
Yeah, go to the meeting. We have public demand at every meeting.
I understand that there is a nice young lady that kind of set the facts straight.
I saw that too.